Joe, we're ready to go whenever you're ready.
Okay, here we go.
Hey, hang on. Whoever's not talking, and can you guys mute yourselves? Because there's a lot of feedback, so that would be super helpful. Thank you.
Okay, here we go. I'd like to open the Village Council regular meeting August 11th, 2020 at 6:30 PM, Village Hall. I am attending remotely as well as Mayor Proton Van der Berg and Councilman Mark Elise. Chaplain, do we have to have a motion before we move any further to allow us to? I know the state allows it, but we just made a process to approve that we are attending remotely?
You don't have to because it's a state law and this is a true remote meeting. But you did just pass your own legislation, so just go ahead and do it. Just a quick motion to allow the three of you.
Motion to allow us to attend remotely. Myself, Mayor Proton Van der Berg, and Councilman Mark Elise.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. First up, we have adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, changes, or anything else?
I don't have any.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm fine. Go ahead, Kim.
Hang on, Jamie, that one. I'd like to add to the closed session to discuss personnel. Suggestion motion would be to recess in the closed session pursuant to NCTS 143-318-11A6 to discuss personnel.
So moved? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Jamie, I'll have you read that since I don't have that thing in front of me, the number, when we get to that form.
Okay.
The only thing, Andy, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. The only thing I had, and I did talk to Christina, I actually had a nice conversation with the president of Weddington Chase. Started discussing my concerns about with the application, the structure and their neighborhood, for Publix and their neighborhood becoming a cut through. I talked to Christina about intentionally adding it. Again, our process is usually the work session and then we discuss it, make options. And Christina reminded me that there, I guess, at the next work session, and correct me if I'm wrong, Christina, we'll be looking at traffic calling device situations?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we were going to add something to the work session for that, and they wanted to be a part of that, they could attend, we can, we do that now or we do that in? At what point do we put that on the agenda? Just call you, my mind is a bit forgetful here real quick, so.
So our engineer with AMT, Mike Walden, is actually going to be in attendance to that meeting, the next work session. And we do have a proposed traffic calming policy that y'all will be discussing at that meeting. So you can invite them and y'all can allow to, you know, make a motion to allow them to participate if that's what council chooses to do.
Okay. All right, so they will be there at the next meeting then?
The engineers, yes.
Yes, okay. So maybe I'll just hold off on adding it. I just wanted to talk about two things we discussed, but I think we can hold it off because we're not really pre-planned tonight. I didn't hear him, so you know, he may have already reached out to you for that, so.
Yeah, we're going to have a meeting soon. He's reached out to me.
Good, good. Okay, so I'll let that go then and we'll, with that, I am, I need to, need a motion to adopt the agenda as much. So moved? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have the Pleasantville Lees. All right. Public comment period. I am not there, or has anyone signed up?
I'm sorry, that grabbed it.
Public comment. There's no one signed up for the general public comment section.
All right. I may say that easy. Next up, we have the Minister, there's the Minister's report. Christina?
Yes. I'll pass this to you all.
I've already got it. No, it's good.
I've got my copy already. So the initial, sorry, number A, or letter A, town hall update. So I'd sent you an email in reference to this memorandum. We basically reached out to all the requested venues, and it looks like Forest Hill Church was the only venue that seemed to be feasible, and it's $40 an hour with cleaning costs of $75, and they are amenable to the dates that we provided to them, which was September 15th and the 21st. There's a picture of their little gathering area. So we just need direction for council if that's what you want to do and choose the 15th or the 21st. And we will make reservations.
Where is the Forest Hill Church, that particular church located?
Waxaw.
Waxaw, good.
15th or the 21st?
Correct.
Sorry, I was on mute there. So that is in Waxaw, and that is the new church that was just built, and that is the main auditorium, correct?
Yes.
My recommendation would be the 15th on a Tuesday night, and the only reason being, if the NFL has a Monday night football game, you're just, you're going to reduce possibility of people. And as for me, I'd rather do it sooner than later because this is going to be a thrill for me.
Is everybody okay with this?
Jamie?
What's that?
Jamie, which day? I'm sorry, which day?
I would recommend the 15th only because the 21st is a Monday, and that may, people may, for those who are still inclined to watch the NFL, there may be a Monday night football game, and I just don't want anything to interfere with us being able to have this.
Since September 15th?
Yes.
And what time do we have that scheduled for?
6 to midnight.
6:30.
6:30 to midnight.
Really?
Really?
That doesn't give you free license, Joe.
I think that's what I said.
Yeah, I would, because again, I don't think this is going to be a short session. I just really don't. There's a lot of stuff we've got to cover, and really, that's a short amount of time. I don't, do I think we're going to go to midnight? No. But at least we've, if we go from, did we say 6:30?
6:30.
We may go to 6:30 to 10:00 and then open it up for questions or something. We really still haven't come up with the format yet, but that would just be my recommendation.
And we'll have, I'm sorry, we'll have all the ideas that y'all thrown around at the next work session. So if y'all want to change anything, we can, you know, make an agenda and come up with questions and that sort of thing if we have anything.
The only question, the only question I have is if we were going to have possibly CPNI do a, you know, kind of like a little forum or whatever they had visuals about, you know, the Heritage District as well as Gene Stowe, would we have enough time to let them know if we wanted them? That be enough time to have them?
I'll speak to both of those. CPNI may be, you know, kind of like out of the picture now, like we'll take their report and run with it kind of thing. As far as Gene Stowe, he is aware that we're going to be hosting a town hall and that he is invited. So when you guys pick a date, I can let him know what that date is, and it's, I mean, probably well in advance for him to be able to make arrangements.
I would go ahead and reach out to Mr. Stowe, the planning board, and for Tricking Greenway, and go ahead and give them the heads up that this is the date that we're tentatively doing it so that they can at least get it in their calendar. And I'm fine with the 15th, so I think, you know, whoever can join us from our advisory boards is a plus. So I think we just need to, you know, look at, move forward and we'll work on the, you know. I would like to have a work agenda for us on the work session, and then we can approve it and then prepare for it.
Now, the only other question is, this may be Chaplain for yourself. Getting a gathering together like this, is it number one, legal with the, with the, you know, the governor at this point, and do we have to implement social distancing? So I don't know how large this authority is, but, you know, separate all the people that come, you know, by either families or is that coming solo by six feet? Do we need to get into that part of this?
Great question. The most recent governor declaration exempted local governments from the express provisions. They are applicable when you're coming in general facilities to your meetings, which this would be. You're exempted, however, the language of the order says you're strongly, strongly encouraged to, you know, provide any safety and distance precautions that you can. So you're exempt, but they want you to try to keep people safe. It is legal and you can have it.
So I think to Jamie's point, putting in the four hours, assume that we would be locking in a four-hour rate at $40 an hour. What were the other costs involved?
Cleaning fee of $75.
Okay. I think that's definitely workable as far as I'm concerned, but in the four hours, we have it. But once we get an agenda to Kim's point, we may be, Mayor, cut down and say, okay, we're only meeting for three hours. We don't know, but we'll, 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 but having it there is probably better. And we've got time, a little bit of time to work on this, to promote it. But I think going forward is we, you know, notify Gene Stowe, any other committees, or that we think should be there and have to. Austin, you'll probably be involved in making sure notices go out that potential forms will be there. But, you know, they may not be, I don't know how that works, but maybe work with Chaplain on that. But I'm good on the 15th. I think I'm hearing everyone's good on the 15th? Yeah, I'm good on the 15th. Would this also be done virtually too, if people didn't feel comfortable coming? Is this something we can rig up?
Yeah, okay. If they have internet, I can set up a WebEx or even two, just so that people can join virtually and ask questions that way.
Because it looked like it was pretty, from what I saw from the picture, I don't know if you folks could see it, Joe and Kim, but it looked like it was pretty high-tech in there. I mean, I was there. I actually attended a meeting for the high school band that was their award ceremony. And it is a very nice venue, and there's plenty of room for social distancing as far as the audience can be. And I think do the best we can to social distance depending on how many people get there. But I think when we look at it, and we may want to take individually a tour with two council members just to go over there, maybe get our staff involved in how that's set up. Because I think there's a wide range of things they can do on the stage, I'm sure for us. Usually a setup for like a piano and concerts and stuff like that. It's that type, it's that type of environment. But I think we could just do desks, chairs, you know, microphones in front of us, that sort of thing. And then have Rohit or whoever's manning the internet, it would be, you know, okay, we have a question coming in from, you know, someone that's zooming in or whatever. And I would go against, if we're going to do this and let's refine this WebEx, because I've heard some interesting stories about, I just came back from Pennsylvania, a school board meeting was held, and someone hijacked the Zoom. I hear that's been done quite a bit, and some things came up on the screen that, you know, some, a big meeting like this, I just don't, I would question, and if we're more comfortable with WebEx, I'd rather stay with that if you can make that work, Austin or Rohit.
Yeah, I heard Zoom had that problem, but I believe WebEx doesn't have that problem. That's, I heard that too, though. Anyway.
All you have to do is Google it, and it happened at the school board back in Pennsylvania. My brother's on the school board back there, and it was actually very embarrassing for them. So we don't want to get in that situation.
Okay, well, they can figure all that out, but I'm good for the 15th. So let's get that penciled in and start letting people know.
All right. Next up, we have HOA signers update.
Yeah, just real quick, I want to let you know the committed parties thus far is Kennerfield Creek, Heritage Oaks, and Weddington Chase, and I will update you as more come on board with these signs. We actually won't do this until probably fall because our staff is going to be doing it. So we're going to wait until park season kind of slows down, and then Derek and his crew will be actually changing the signs out.
I may have gotten ahead of myself. Chaplain, do we need a motion to approve September 15th?
No.
Y'all don't need that right now. You can, and I think you're going to formalize some more things. This is just instructions, and you can call for the meeting individually as the mayor.
Okay.
Will this be a special call meeting?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you, messing with my mic here. Next up, we have planning board report. Rohit?
Okay, I have a couple of short things. Gene Stowe said he does not have a 501(c)(3). Just as an update for the question asked at the last meeting. Okay, no questions. So the tree outside of here, NC DOT said that they will remove the tree as they find funding to do it. When that is, I don't know, but we're in the process of seeing if they can do it sooner than later.
Is that a tree in the easement of DOT?
It is in their right of way, yes. And that's why they said that they'll do it.
Okay, so really down my ability then, correct?
Yes, yes.
So I did see an email from the pastor to NC DOT just saying, hey, can you give us a date?
Yeah, and they haven't responded yet.
Were you on that email?
Yeah.
Okay. And then crickets.
Right. Okay, so finally, I just wanted to give an update on the Village Center renderings. It's taken a little longer than I expected to find someone because people are asking, budgets are way too high. And so I'm just trying to find someone that can do it for a reasonable cost. And, you know, we're going to continue to reach out. We just created a blurb that we'll put out to the residents list and various other places. So that's just, that's just a work in progress. I wanted to update you guys. That's all I have.
Any questions from council? Not for me.
Hey, real quick, so when you say that someone is reasonable, are we, are we way out of line with what you're looking for monetarily?
Yeah, the one quote I got was in the like tens of thousands range. And I really want to try to find someone a lot less than that because I only have, I think, 15,000 total for the Village Center this year. And so I'll just, I'll just continue to work with, see, see what I can find in schools and artists and, you know. It's just, it's just, we'll, we'll see what I get, and then I'll bring quotes in a future meeting.
We didn't budget particularly for renderings. We budgeted for economic analysis and trying to figure out the economics part of it. So we're trying to move, you know, we'd have to move some money around. So we're basically working on a zero budget, trying to figure it out. So we're just trying to, trying to make it work.
So have we, have we entertained or have we reached out to our community to see if there's anyone who does that that's willing to maybe offer up their services at the discount grade or voluntarily?
We're actually sending it out.
We're just setting the, put the blurb out.
We're going to put it out this Friday. We just wrote it. We're going to, yeah, we're going to put it out this, this week.
Okay, so we haven't done that yet, but I would suggest doing that as soon as possible. And then, you know, we, who knows? I mean, there are some people that are trying to figure out ways to be a part of the community. This is a perfect way.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, we're going to do that this week.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it? That's all you had? No other questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have road report.
Actually have several things on roads, but since Mike is going to be here at the next meeting, I'd kind of defer those to the work session. Couple of things to mention is we're waiting to hear back from DOT on the new town road petition as far as taking over acceptance on that. There were some questions about the roundabout construction and how that would be impacted, and I'm still waiting to hear back from NC DOT. Also, we have an update on the emergency repair that took place in Weddington Chase. And then last but not least, we have not formally accepted the roads from the last resurfacing cycle. We had a little bit of an issue at Firethorn, and we'll discuss that at the work session while Mike is here. Unless y'all have any questions about anything in particular.
So in regards to Firethorn, do you have a list of those?
I do not. There's a, there's an issue that there was a puddling of water near a storm drain, I believe, and we're, we've got some, some issues with that because it was not on the punch list or the contractor didn't get it from the punch list. And so therefore, we have some options to consider of getting it repaired. It's less than $1,000. So Michael will have some information for you guys at the work session on it.
Okay, because I, just because I drive that all the time, I see that puddle constantly. I don't think it ever goes away unless it stays hot for a couple of days. But the other thing was the manholes, those are on it to level them out?
Those have not been done?
No.
Okay.
No, not even close. In fact, I just, I ride my bike almost every day, and the manholes have not been touched.
Okay.
At least the one I go by every day, and as I look at them, I think I counted four or five that need to be addressed.
I'll have that conversation with Mike.
Okay. Anything, thoughts from anybody else?
And the taking over the roads in front of here, the question still is, if we were to do that, it's about the roundabout.
Correct, yeah. They're in the middle of transition of staff, and so they're kind of slow in response.
Okay.
That's all I have, sir.
Joe, you're muted.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you very much for the road report. Next up, we have deputies reports. We have anything from our deputy? I see him in the background there.
Hey, hey. No, unless you guys have questions. Like I said, the only thing that me and Tommy have been able to come up with is the traffic stop number is, should be higher. We've run into an issue.
You might want to come over here and speak to him.
We've run into an issue with, yes, the violation occurred in Marvin, but we weren't able to get him stopped outside of Marvin, so that number doesn't count towards Marvin. So we're trying to get a way to get that fixed to make the number even higher.
Does that make sense?
I had a hard time, I had a hard time hearing what he was saying about.
He said he clocked you on your bicycle counting manhole covers.
So there is issue.
I do see them out on Joe Carr Road, which is great, so that's, that's good news. No, so.
The last one that goes down.
I did have a question, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I did have a question again, because I didn't hear what he was saying about some incident just outside or something.
So their numbers are reflective of minor changes. They may have an issue that starts in Marvin, but they actually get pulled outside of the corporate limits. And so the numbers aren't reflective of them actually taking place in Marvin. So the numbers might be skewed just a little bit when you look at the reports.
Okay. And being, and you may not be able to answer this question, my final question. I just learned from someone who lives over in the Bonds Grove Road that meets up with Providence Road. There was a death on that corner?
Yes.
Can you inform us anymore about if there was a homicide or anything else?
It's my understanding it was self-inflicting, so that's, I think that's pretty much all they've let out to the public just for the families sake.
That there was, why, it's hard to hear you.
Just for the family's sake, I think that's all they've let out is just the fact that it was a, I think he took his own life, and that's pretty much all they, they're willing to talk about it.
Okay. All right.
The last.
Any other questions for council?
No, I was going to say, the last numbers I saw, we're doing a good job. Y'all are doing a great job of curtailing the stopping.
There's been a significant amount of decrease of our speed goes, so it's working.
I can attest to the fact that these guys have been busy because I've been around quite a bit lately and seen them a lot, so they've been working it pretty hard.
I agree, just seeing, I agree, just seeing them out there and more of a presence is a good thing. And I think people need to understand that that little bit of difference in the annual uptick and what we had to raise the taxes, well worth it. And however, I will admit that a lot of people flashing their lights at me on Joe Carr Road. They're very friendly here in Marvin, they're letting you know there's an officer.
I'll do better hiding. I'll do a little better hiding.
Good job, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again for your service. Thank you. Next up, we have planning board chair report. Is John there?
He's not here, and he's been having trouble getting on the WebEx, but I'm calling him right now. Hey, hey, John? Okay, okay, I'll put you on speaker if you have anything to say, or you can just say that you don't.
Okay. Are you there?
Yeah.
Am I there?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure that I've got anything, I'm not sure exactly what you said earlier, obviously, but I'm not sure that I have anything special to add unless they have any questions from me.
I don't have any at the top.
Yeah, I don't.
No.
Okay, that's fine then.
And I'm good on this end. Thank you, John. Next up, we have PR and G H R report. Is John available?
John's here. Yep, thank you.
Hey, Don.
Hey, guys. Just a couple of things that I wanted to touch on for some folks that might not have been at the park lately. Couple of great things going on there that we've done. The pavilion is up, which is, you know, down there towards the lake. So if people haven't had a chance to see that, it's a great, you know, another area that we have some shelters, some shade, and, you know, people can go and, you know, set up a little picnic or something like that down in that end. Also, we had the trails redone within the park. We went with more kind of like the crushed stone that we started to do at Tullamore and many of the other greenways that we've been doing. So we think that in conjunction with one of, some of the work that was done along with that, which, you know, is actually recontouring some of the trails. We also did some different drainage work in some of the areas where we would get flood washes to come through. And they all look great. I was just out there a couple of nights ago having a little picnic and walked the trails, saw everything, and just really wanted to commend Derek and the staff that's been there, keeping things up and everything's clean, you know, things are, you know, nice and well-kept and everything. And just wanted to bring that. Couple of things out of our meeting that, just looking for a little bit of feedback from council on. We had a discussion about the roundabouts, and there was, I think, the discussion around, well, we'd certainly like to start, you know, getting into and doing some plantings by, you know, the end of the fall is really the best time to do it, make the plants, and give them the best chance at surviving. But one of the major questions that we're kind of struggling with is there were plans, you know, initially, and we have run some conduit for the potential of having irrigation to the roundabouts. So, you know, if we really want to start putting plants in there, with the budget that we have now, the irrigation part was kind of removed. So, you know, just wanted to let council know that if we do do, start doing something there here in the fall, we may start to look at it more as a more limited and phased-in plan where we may just start with some very drought- where we may just start with some very drought-tolerant type things. We're gonna have to bring in a ton of dirt because it's mostly just construction kind of debris dirt that they use in there now. So, you know, between, you know, needing to get some of the plants, the dirt that's gonna be necessary to do it, you know, I, I don't know what council's expectations were about starting on one of the roundabouts. But starting would mean a start. We really can't, you know, even get one fully done, you know, because we don't want to put a ton of plants in there, have no irrigation, and then have them die out over, you know, over the coming months. So that, that was one area of discussion. The other area of discussion was the direction that we're going with National Night Out. And that one's kind of critical as well for us to discuss at our next meeting and get some feedback on because they pushed the date back from August to, I believe, October 4th or something like that.
I think it's the 6th.
Maybe 6th, yeah. But, so it puts it on a Tuesday night in, in October. We'll only have one, maybe two more meetings before that. And, you know, with COVID restrictions, all of those things, in the past, the deputies have been great, Deputy Swan and others, of going out, getting donations of food. We were cooking food and handing out food. We didn't know if that would be, you know, a great idea to do until, you know, people feel more comfortable getting to the, you know, other side of, of the restrictions and things like that. So, you know, we're certainly reaching out to some of the folks like the SWAT team and staff is, and the fire department to have some of those resources there like we normally do. But just wanted to get your feedback about, you know, not having food, the time that we might do it, and, and any ideas that you might have for what you want to see out of that event since it's necessarily gonna have to be a little bit different than it has been in the past. And that's it.
Thank you, John. Does anyone have a comment or question for him?
John, I'm so sorry that I dropped out of the meeting. Last week, I had terrible cell service, so I totally missed everything. But I would, I would say that with the, you know, the COVID situation and what's going on, we should not be thinking about food or serving refreshments, but just as a time to, you know, get together and, you know, but not have food. That's just, that's just my thought.
If I was gonna add on to that, to that point, I, I will tell you that we could get creative here too. And I was just at a wedding. It was an outdoor barn wedding in Pennsylvania. And what they did is they had fruit wraps like hors d'oeuvres, which obviously we wouldn't go that crazy or anything, but something to think about. But even more important, maybe encourage this time to, because it's a yard, to have each family of whoever comes bring their own little picnic basket. And, you know, maybe have that type of thing where you have an environment where you're six feet apart and, you know, you can enjoy your own refreshments and keep that part of it. Maybe just an idea is what I would throw out there for that as far as food, 'cause you're gonna need drinks, and we'd probably better off to, better served to encourage this time for people to bring their own drinks.
Yeah, and that's one of the items that we did discuss is people being, being able to bring their own picnic and stuff like that.
Okay. I, I will tell you, John, I was on the trails. I actually took my wife and we went out for a walk, and we went just beyond where you're at, the extension of the preserve where it is a dead-end trail. And we walked that, that Crush. You know, initially, I wasn't, you know, I thought it would be, be nice if it was more consistent, but it, it's, it's very nice. I think I encourage anyone to go out and walk that meandering trail. It's all covered. You're not gonna get the sun beating down on you. I will say on the preserve side, the main thing, I think I reached out to the picture for Derek. A tree was down. Now, as you enter that area, a tree was knocked down that it looked like was planted there. I don't know if that's our responsibility or is that the homeowner's there? But it was clearly, you know, knocked over by the wind or something like that.
Do you want to speak to that or?
It's a small tree.
Oh. So we basically have a precedent now that any part of any fallen tree that's within our right-of-way or our easement is our responsibility to remove, regardless of where it was, where it's planted. So I just was notified about that today, and that's what we decided that we were going to do. We should.
Yeah, this, this, this was a tree that was planted that looks like by us or by whoever did this trailway. And I'm not sure if it was the homeowner, but it's on the left side, so it's not on the side of the homeowner. So it's actually across the path, which led me to believe that it was ours. But it was, it just looked like it was knocked over and needed to be reset. It was a very new tree and proposed, could have been a kid that did it or whatever, but loose ground, whatever. But it just, I, I sent it to Derek. I don't know where, where we're at with that. But I, I'm not asking to get it removed. I think it looks nice there. It's just a new tree that was knocked down.
We'll take care of it.
Okay. The last thing, John, is when you mentioned the water for the, so if we were to somehow magically appear a budget for, I think we should do it, but for the foliage and stuff, where would our water source be right now if we were able to do that?
I, I believe that the way that it was originally designed is the conduit runs from the roundabout to what is potentially the town hall property. So there should be some conduit already in there. The other question that kind of came up that we kind of decided amongst ourselves is if we're gonna plan to do one roundabout first, which one should it be? And we decided it should be the one here closer to town hall first. So that would be the first one we would start working on. Now, there, the water becomes kind of a different story because the other roundabout is much closer to that property. And I'm not sure how they, Robie, do you, do you remember how they planned any of the conduit or?
No, I wasn't involved in that.
I'm texting Mike right now.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking about the conduit 'cause I know I asked to have that done while, while they were doing it. So they did put some pipe in there for allowing the water to get there. But where is the water source? We don't, I don't think there's, is there a water line? Where are we pulling from?
We don't have one. We don't have one. We were waiting for town hall to tap into the water from town hall. But we don't have a water source, which is why, which is why PR and G is talking about doing drought-resistant plants right now until we figure out what our water source is gonna be so that we at least have something going in there instead of just weeds.
So if we have a water source, John, would you say that we were going to just try and do some drought-resistant type stuff is what we're looking at?
Yeah, well, it, it just, it opens up the type of planning that you can do for that roundabout. Now, there may be other roundabouts that we decide, yeah, you want them to look nice, but you're never gonna run one or two as well, you know? So it, it, it's really just kind of what the vision is that you're gonna want for, for each of them, the accessibility to water. I, I think the intent, you know, way back, you know, 'cause we were talking about this as long as five years ago, what was that? They thought that if they were, were putting a town hall there, you know, that even if it was two years out, they might put the well in now, you know, or something like that. Because they want a well for other irrigation purposes and stuff like that versus using county water for that.
I think there are several questions that need to be answered before all of this stuff goes in, such as what we're doing with the road, what's gonna happen. I know that DOT requires the drainage, which we have not done, which is added cost that if we own it, we won't have to do, which I think is ridiculous to do to begin with. So there's a few questions. I think we should probably put this on the work session meeting and get a clear plan together because we have about a month and a half, two months before they need to start implementing a plan if they're gonna plant this fall. So we need to kind of put all our options together and figure out what, which direction we're gonna go on that, I think.
Couple of things I want to.
Can we have, can we have Derek, like, put together a plan for the work session? Either Andy, this is on the work session. And I did see some of the drawings that he had prepared for Park Second Greenway. So if we could, if we could do that and just like kind of start coming up with a planting plan, and then we can talk about it at the work session.
We can definitely do that. And I do want to mention, I did bring this up for the conduit at the meeting that we had in reference to approving that sub-drainage. Some of the conduit was used in that sub-drainage agreement. So I need to check with that with Mike and find out for sure what's left to be used for irrigation or electric.
Are we locked into that now?
The sub-drainage is already in, so.
It's already in?
Yes.
Okay, so then we have to spend.
I don't know, I don't know the percentage, the, the capacity, so I need to find out from Mike. But it was used. I did bring this up a couple of months ago. I know y'all probably don't remember, but I can go back and pull the, the details.
Part of the reason I brought this up is because, you know, it was seemed to be indicated at the meeting that there was the hope on council that we could at least get something nice in, in by this fall. But really, just want to make sure everybody understands the, the kind of the pieces of that puzzle other than just hiring somebody in to put plants.
There's also the option to bring in a water truck as well. I, I don't know the cost associated with that, but that's an option. We can hire someone to do that.
Yeah, he gets pretty much any landscape coming, coming water plants for you for, for a certain amount of time to, to do it. Been involved in those processes before.
But we'll get that on the work session.
Okay, any other questions for John?
No, but John, do you feel better currently direction for next one out?
Yeah, I do. I, I think we'll go forth with some planning. I think there was the hope that maybe for the next meeting, I know they couldn't make it to this meeting, that some of the officers that kind of helped coordinate some of the resources might be available for our next meeting or at least to have a discussion with them kind of beforehand. And we, we still have at least one or two meetings before October 6th, so I, I, I think we'll be in good shape.
Very good. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
All right. Next up, we have Consent Agenda. Before we make a motion to approve the consent agenda, is it much to ask if, if, if I, 'cause I was just going over it again. There's, especially in the second one, I think there's a couple typos. I mean, are we, should we be correcting that? Like, for instance, in John Jones's, he had a comments and public comments, I, I believe. And I don't know if that's his exact, that it was just transferred or there are like some typos or kind of wording seems a, a little bit. I just read it again just for kind of to remind myself how important it was that people get up and speak up about stuff. And I, I ended up catching a couple of typos. So before we approve this, is it okay if we just say, maybe have him do a quick, or Austin do a quick run over again of all the things and do some typos? But I'm good with.
Are you talking about the minutes?
The minutes, yes, I'm sorry.
I would point, Joe, if you have issues with the minutes, I pull the minutes off of the consent agenda, and we'll throw them back on the work session and keep moving forward.
Okay, it was just some little miniscule typos. That's why I was asking, so.
I would just pull, I, I would make a motion, pull the minutes from the consent agenda, move them back on the work session, and we'll get the typos, whatever.
Okay.
Other friends may.
I would make a motion to pull the May 12, 2020, six regular meeting minutes off and do correct for typos. And.
May 12.
Regular?
Yeah.
No one?
Moved? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I don't need a motion to approve the agenda as presented or as amended, I'm sorry.
Consent agenda.
Amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So next up, we have public hearing open. Public hearing, CUP advocate number 20-12459509 Wyndham Lane, full in the rear yard that abuts a side yard. First up, we have public comments. Would we have anyone sign up to speak?
We do. We have, we have a letter from Mike Gilboy, and we also have Al and Marina Cephalo that will speak. And just for the letter, you wanna read or? Okay, I'll, I'll read Mike Gilboy's letter.
Hold on.
We need to get people sworn in.
Hold on. Do we not need a motion to open the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You do, sorry. Good point.
Okay, so I make a motion and check open. You guys good?
Yeah, open the public hearing. Okay, all those in favor?
Do you want to make a motion?
Aye.
Did you agree to all saying?
Thank you.
Okay, and now we need to get anybody who's gonna present to be sworn in.
Do they have to swear in for a public comment?
Well, their comments are evidence, and you can present that.
So what about him who is not here?
You can read it and say it's, they'll just have to look at the veracity of the letter. But you presenting, you need to be sworn in.
Oh, sure.
And it's happened. I don't know if we've sworn in people for public comments, but if there was someone attesting to, there was someone attesting to the actual property individually or specifics about the property and what they went through and stuff like that, that's what we've done. We've sworn them in for that. But for public comments, are you sure we have to do that?
Absolutely, 'cause this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and they're not public, they're not, public comments are evidence. And that's one reason y'all need to look at the, with the pools. And y'all are trying to look at that, removing them. 'Cause usually when you have quasi-judicial, it's bigger items. But anybody who speaks is supposed to be sworn in. But the last few, we haven't had anybody speak. We've just had the staff present the reported.
Now we have a letter. How do we swear them in for that?
We can't swear him in. You can allow him to present it, and y'all just look at the veracity.
So I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna swear me in.
Yeah.
And then I'll present the letter as something to higher see.
Correct.
As evidence.
Aye.
All right, so you have a statement?
It's generic.
All right. That will work. What's it, this?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Do you swear, do you swear or affirm? Do you tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Is there anybody else that's gonna be speaking on this one?
There are the applicants and some other neighbors that are virtual.
Okay, and we'll need to get to them to, if they, can they hear us now to do that? Or do we need to unmute them later?
Yes.
All right, can you hear us? This is Don and Chris Poor.
Yes, hello.
Hi.
Um, so we're going to swear one at a time, or we're going to swear everyone?
Let's just swear them all in right now. Anybody that's going to speak on this?
All right, so I guess we can start with Don and Chris Poor.
Just do the same.
Just, yeah.
Okay. Do y'all swear to tell a whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yes.
I do, yeah.
And who's the other one?
Um, a neighbor, Jennifer Barbara, who is also on the call.
Okay, and let's do that.
Jennifer, do you swear or affirm to tell a whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I swear to tell nothing but the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Okay, thank y'all. And I know that seems.
And then we have some, we have some neighbors here, too.
What?
Okay. Do you swear to tell a whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
And what is your name for the record?
Al.
Chappell. Okay, thank you.
Is that everyone that wanted to speak?
Yep, I was sitting out longer. I can't hear anything.
Is that everyone that wanted to speak?
I don't know who just, who you just swore in, Austin. I can't hear when they're not far away from the microphone.
Sorry, his name was Al Cephalo. He's a resident of 501 Wyndham Lane.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll start off. This is a letter from Mike Gilboy. He's the HOA president. This was, this was the same exact letter that he presented to the planning board, but he's not here today. It says, "Good evening, planning board members," but he's, this is the same letter. "My name is Mike Gilboy, and I am the HOA president of Wyndham Hall Neighborhood, where the Pores are trying to build a pool. Our HOA board walked the entire property with the potential pool builder, Dennis, on the evening of June 9th. Dennis explained to our board what he and the Pores were trying to do in terms of their pool and landscaping. Our board made a few requirements to him. One, the project could not make any major changes without the reapproval of our board. And most important, he needed to have screening from the two abutting lots. You need to screen these like you would want if you lived in one of these homes." That's in quotes. "Three, the pool equipment could not be visible from the street or by any homeowner, so the pool equipment will be covered. We, as a board, also made it clear of a few important things. Drainage could not become worse. Landscaping needed to be clean and neat. Dennis explained to us that the drainage would get better since the water landing in the pool would not run anywhere, and the water landing on the pool deck would run into the pool. Dennis also explained to us that the landscaping on the property line would be improved and kept neat. The Pores had talked about moving their fence to make this a non-issue, and keeping the landscaping easier to maintain. Lastly, our board asked that the job site be kept as neat as possible to minimize the disruption to others. Our HOA was very satisfied with all the answers we received and unanimously approved the project. The board takes a stance that if homeowners are trying to improve their homes and their home values, we are all in favor of it. We've seen other work that this pool builder has done, and his work is very impressive and will 100% increase the home value of this home. Thank you." Okay, so that was his statement, and I've talked to the pool builder directly also to verify that, that he had mentioned those things. So, um, the next public comment would be from Al and Marina Cephalo. I think Al was sworn in, so if you could, I guess, come somewhere close to the mics and speak to it.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, my name is Al Cephalo.
He said he can hear you.
My name is Al Cephalo. My wife and I, Marina Cephalo, and our son have lived and been residents of Wyndham Hall since 2013, and have known the Barbrows since then. We have also known the Pores since they moved in just a few years ago. My question is, what is the point of contention? As homeowners of Wyndham Hall and Bridle Path, we all pay our property taxes and HOAs every year. This alone gives Chris and Don Poor the right to install a pool if they choose. I have served in the military for 27 years and have just retired in March of this year. I did not, or I did go to Iraq to fight the war on terror against oppression and tyranny. I'm not saying this to get accolades or kudos from anyone. I am mentioning this because I look at what's going on in our country today with all the rioting and looting, and I ask myself, is this what I really sacrificed myself for? Now I have to worry about, on a much smaller scale, neighbor versus neighbor. Does one neighbor have the right to dictate to another neighbor what he is allowed to do on his land or property? The Pores are not just, are not the first family to put in a pool in their backyard in our neighborhood, nor in Bridle Path, so why is now considered a problem? It is bad enough that our governor has decreed all health clubs and gyms be closed. I am very much against this, and because I believe that health and fitness are essential to our livelihood. It is part of a trifecta, mind, body, and spirit, schools and colleges for the mind, health clubs and gyms for the body, and church for the spirit. So we, as citizens of the United States, have learned to adapt and overcome adversity. Installing a pool is just such an answer to the very problem at hand. And in six months' time from now, if I decide to install a pool, will I be subjected to return to a committee to fight for my right on my land? Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Thank for your service.
Thank you.
It's, uh, public comment?
Um, yeah, next we'll have Jennifer Barbara, who is the resident of 609 Appomattox Drive, and the, the side yard neighbor, or the neighbor whose side yard is abutting this, this applicant's rear yard. Barbara. Jennifer, are you there?
She's muted.
Yeah.
There she goes.
Now?
Yes, hello.
Now, good evening, council. Thanks for allowing us the opportunity to speak. I can't affirm any of Mr. Chappell's comments about us trying to prevent the Pores from building a pool on their property. We have concerns, because unfortunately, our neighborhood is divided in half. Even though we are one neighborhood, we have two separate HOAs, and we are not protected by anything that occurs on the Wyndham Hall side, even though we share three property lines with Wyndham Hall neighborhood. We have to say no rights on their side of the HOA. We are the only resident that that happens to, unfortunately, because our other, we're divided by the creeks from the rest of our side of the neighborhood. But we are not in any way trying to prevent the Pores from building a pool on their land. What we are concerned about is how the pool is going to drain, where was the overflow drainage going to go, the screening, and also, obviously, the percentage of impervious ground that is changing, and how that will continue to affect the drainage on our lot that drains through the creek. So I want to make sure that I address that. We have no intention, we have talked to Don, I know we can get our plan moving the fence around the property lines, which we're very happy to hear, so that will enable them to better take care of their screening. I have been assured that the drainage is to be, and away from properties, so the overflow drainage, I should specify, away from our properties. We don't have to worry about that. We don't need to know anything further about the type of screening that's being put in, or I know the firm has been mentioned, but I don't, you know, I have no idea what the plans are. But it sounds like everybody has a plan, and I like what I'm hearing. So we have no problems of contention here, so I'm not really sure where that really came off.
Yeah, can that be stated for the record?
We have never tried to prevent another property owner from doing what they want to do on their property. But because the pool's going to be 30 to 40 feet off our driveway, obviously, I think that we needed a part of the discussion, and I was very concerned because Wyndham Hall just shut us out.
Are you there?
Uh, yes, we were just waiting to see if you are finished with your public comment.
Do you have any other comments, Jennifer?
We have time, thank you.
Okay, that will be, yeah, that will be part of the rap, the record verbatim. Um.
Okay, anybody else for a hint?
Um, the applicant, should they speak in the public comments, or will they just?
Well, I mean, this is a public hearing. If they want to say something, this is their time, yes.
Okay, Don and Chris Poor, if you want to make a public comment, you can do so now.
Uh, okay, thank you. I mean, we have nothing else to add that we added at the meeting a month ago, but, you know, we, we set out just to put in a pool. We're following the rules, and, you know, we'll make sure everything is, check the list, you know, with the, you know, the fencing, the, make sure that it's 90% shaded from the different homes, from the streets, you know, we're gonna, we're following all the rules. We're not looking to break anything, but we're just, just trying to put in a pool, that was it.
Thank you. Okay, any other comment for the record, public comments, period? All right, I'm going to ask to make a motion to cut, close a public comment, period?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Not need a motion to open the, lost on my side, discussion in consideration for public hearing CUP application number 20-12459-509, Wyndham Lane, pool in the rear yard.
And Mayor, since this is a remote meeting, the North Carolina law has with, when you have a public hearing and a remote meeting, you can discuss, but you're to refrain from any final decision until 24 hours after the public hearing, to allow any further comments to come in. I don't really know how that works on a quasi judicial, because everybody's supposed to be sworn in, but the legislator didn't think of that, and that is the rule they have placed upon us.
So what does that, what does that mean to us?
I would recommend that you make your decision at the work session.
So we can make the decision in the work session?
Yes, you just have to notify.
Okay.
And I know y'all generally don't, but I would publish that, because I don't think they should have to wait that long.
Again, this is.
Can, can, Chaplain, can we not? Can we not make a decision tonight if no public comments come in, then we need to review, then we can, our decision stands? I don't want them to have to wait two weeks for us to have a work session.
I get that, and with it being a pool, I think you could do it conditionally. If you get any comments on, you'd have to state it's conditional and revoke, revoke that and handle it at the work session. But I get what you're saying, and if this was a, if this was a large commercial development, I would take a different position on that. But we're probably not going to have too many of these with this strange ruling and rules we're in right now.
Are we going to?
Well, I mean, if you look at even the fact of swearing in, or assuming they had a Bible in front of them, I mean, it's, this is just kind of crazy how the situation would be, and but I agree with Kim, that I think when we make the motion, we can make the motion to approve it conditioned on no further, and if a more public comment comes in, then we'd have to take that to the work session. Is that correct?
That's fine.
Okay.
But Jennifer, we know people were talking to her, actually, they didn't, we couldn't see them, less than anybody.
That's funny.
I mean, I heard Jennifer's voice, I know it was her, so.
And, and, you know, just from a discussion standpoint, can we discuss about this, as I look at this, or is this the time to discuss it, I assume, correct?
Yes, yes.
This is the time to discuss it, and then you would make your motion with the four findings, and then the last part would be, if you approve, it'd be approval conditioned upon no further public comments. If there are any adverse, you will reconsider this at the work session.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, can I go real quick? So I saw that the plant was started at 22 plant and planning board had up that to 42 plants for screening. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yes, yes, that's correct. They saw that the screening could be even greater, and the contractor went ahead and included some more screening.
Okay.
My question to that, that flagged me on that, is they, they talked about, this property has two rows of trees along the rear property line, but some trees will be removed to place a fence on the property line. Several additional trees will be planted. Do we know what kind of trees? Are they like evergreen-type trees, or, I mean, that's one, and?
Those trees weren't evergreens, so they wouldn't count towards the screening anyway. Um, but the issue there is that they have two rows of trees, and the fence is in front of those rows. Um, so that, that was the, the maintenance issue that Jennifer Barbara was talking about. When you have the trees on the other side of your fence, it's hard to maintain them, so they weren't. Um, but what the Pores are going to do, they're going to move the fence to the property line, which would put, well, they have to remove some of those trees, but it would put all the rest of the trees on their side of the fence, so that they can maintain them.
And this fence plans to be, plans to be a permanent fence, because I, and the only reason I ask is that we have someone in our neighborhood that put a fence to be official through the county, and then as soon as they can, they got their approval, they removed the fence because they didn't like the look of it. But I think the county requires, and I don't know even if that falls under our ordinance or the village of, or the county, but the county requires a six-foot or a certain high fence.
I think it's four feet, and it's the state, the state building code. But I, I do know what property you're talking about, and we're still working with them to make sure they build a fence, but in this case, I, I have no evidence that they aren't planning to do anything but a permanent fence.
Okay, when you say working with them, and I'm not talking about this, that you are, it is the, it is the county's?
Well, no, it is the state building code, but we also have an ordinance in our code that says that you have to build a fence.
Yeah, it's mandated for a swimming pool for public health and safety because of children, animals, and other things. So you have to have, you're mandated to have a fence to earn enclosure for your pool.
Everybody mandates it.
Yes.
Right, to us, and the county, everybody between.
Um, yeah, just for the record, I know Al had spoke earlier and stuff, and, and again, Al, thank you for your service, but the, the reason for this, we have ordinances, and these don't come up for just every pool. This is because the backyard is abutting to a side yard. It's an ordinance that we have that we're required to go through this process, just to check off, make sure things, because my assumption is when we do developments and they put a pool in the backyard, everything is designed to slope off, but I think if, in my opinion, and I'll close here, that if Jennifer or whoever was the owner that was concerned about the runoff, if that was addressed and met, I'm prepared to move forward with the finding of facts and an up or down, unless we have other comments from the council.
The only comment I have is, and speaking probably for the planning board and for John Jones, I sat in for this session and the other, of course, and I thought, planning board, just a compliment to the planning board, they really talked this through, and they, you know, they, they gave a recommendation, as you see, and with what they had recommended. And I thought they did a very good job in analyzing it, so, for what it's worth, but I'd like to give a compliment to the planning board. I thought they really discussed this thoroughly.
Um, on that note, I would like to mention that this, the planning board recommended approval unanimously with two conditions, that one, they increased the screening, and two, that it explicitly depicted where the pool equipment was going. And if you see the site plan that was, that has a revised note, if they've done both of those things.
Any other comments from council?
No, sir.
Does someone want to volunteer to read the finding of facts? And Chaplain, do you recommend we go through each one and say yea or nay, or do all of them?
You, on, on something like this, I think you can do them collectively, and if you don't get the findings effect, y'all could go through individually if you don't get an affirmative.
Okay. Have a volunteer to read the finding of facts? I didn't tell you once.
It's stuck in my head, no, like he's picking up on it.
No, I got, finding of facts.
They're, they're newbies, Kim. You got to do it, so.
Uh, Jamie says he's going to do it.
In consideration of the quest for conditional use permit, the village council will need to, uh, go act on the following findings. This, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the value of a journey or abutting property, or the use is a public necessity. Location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located, and will be in general conformity with this chapter and the Village Land Use Plan, and?
That's all. And you make, your motion is to make all those in the affirmative, and those are all found. Is it yes?
Yes.
Okay.
They are.
That it will not, okay.
Yep.
Is there a motion on the table?
He, he said that was his motion.
That was my motion.
To make all those findings in the affirmative.
And then do we have in the recommendations from planning board at this point, Chaplain?
You do not need to, because the motion was that if it's according to the plans, and the plans were revised. So the plans of.
Yeah, the planning includes the recommendations from planning board already.
So the plans have already been updated. If the plans had not been, you would need to include those, too, but the plans were updated and submitted.
I didn't realize that based on the paperwork I have, but, so is there a further discussion on this matter? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now there'll be, need to be a motion to approve the permit subject to, or contingent upon no public, negative comment, uh, public comments being received within 24 hours of the end of the public hearing.
Further discussion?
You want to, so moved, you don't want to adopt that motion?
Who can't make the motion?
Do you have it, dude? Do you follow the, the staff recommendation?
Okay, I make a motion to consider approval of the CUP application 20-12469, contingent on no public comments being received within 24 hours from the end of the public hearing.
Further discussion? Try and get you on the council, Chaplain. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. You can tell we haven't gone through this remote thing very often, as far as what we have to, all the caveats, I guess. Um, thank you very much, and congratulations to the Pores on getting their fourth pool. Thank you very much, and congratulations to the fours on getting their fourth pool, completed, so, hope that goes well for you.
We can't talk. Are we?
Now, what branch of service?
Are we?
Start off there, of course. Where are you stationed?
Next up, we have a, your, public hearing for CUP application number 20-12469. Two for Walker Bluff Court, pool in the rear yard, but a butt to a side yard. Need motion to open public comments?
I'm moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good advice.
Motion passes. Next up, public comments, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
There are nobody signed up for the public comments in the village hall. The applicant is on the WebEx, and there are no other public here on the WebEx that I can see.
So let's get, you sworn in, and the applicant.
Yeah. Good.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Yeah, to the applicant, for, and to.
And to the applicant.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth so help you God?
Yes, I'm sure it's true and nothing but true, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So would you like to make a public comment at this time, or do you, you just want to speak during the discussion? I mean, if you have anything to say about a property, you should say it now.
Yeah, I can just say it now. We have all the tents installed already, and then all the trees are in place, and there was some of the trees need to be added, you know, so we already have the design already. So, and we don't have any objections, and we have a jury approval, and our neighbors know that we are going to have a pool, and the neighbors already have a pool here, so yeah, so expect to have a pool, and our kids are just waiting for this. That's it, Roger.
Okay, great. I don't believe that there are any other public comments.
All right, thank you. I'll need a motion to come, close the public hearing.
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, and motion to open discussion in consideration of CUP number one, the number 20-1249, 12459.
12469. That's the wrong one, that's the wrong one.
69, Gerald.
I'm sorry, 12469, 240, Walkers Bluff Court, sorry.
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm in the new setting here, give me a break there, so.
No breaks for you, buddy.
It's bad lighting, too, so.
You don't, you don't have your lit up lighting for you?
No. Rohit, do you want to add anything to what happened in public, with the?
Planning board?
Sure, in this case, the planning board unanimously recommended approval and did not place any additional conditions. In this case, the applicant is already planning to plant additional trees, but they do have a row of evergreen trees that are mature and would qualify as screening on their own. And the pool is going to be located 70 feet from the property line, which is well greater than the 20 feet, which is the minimum. And as the applicant states, the applicant stated that he talked to his neighbor, and the neighbor was not opposed to the pool. I didn't talk to the neighbor myself, but it's, it's much far, the pool is much farther than the minimum, and as he also said, the applicant's next door neighbor, who also technically is not a side yard neighbor, but is, like, on the ground, it's basically also a side yard neighbor, also currently has a pool. But as I said, they didn't have to have a CUP, because on paper, there are rear yards of butt, but it's so, it's, it's a technicality, but on, on the ground, it's like as if it's a rear yard budding a side yard, so, and so there's no problem with that pool. Then this pool is pretty similar, you know, orientation, so there probably shouldn't be a problem with this one either.
So, but I want to make a motion to approve this, I just need to say, I make a motion that all of these would be in the affirmative, and then read them?
Yes, read the four, and then if those are approved, then there'll be a motion to approve the, the permit conditionally, or contingent, and that's on the first page of the packet that you have. Correct, yes, you can make all four in the affirmative.
So I'm gonna be, so I'd like to make a motion in the affirmative, that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety of local or proposed and developed according to plan. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding property, or the use is a public necessity. The location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan, as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located, and will be in general conformity with this chapter and the village land use plan.
Sorry, any further discussion? All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
And I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that this would be approved, the approval of CUP application 20-12469 will be contingent on no public comments being received within 24 hours from the end of the public hearing, and if any comments are received by the clerk, we'll take a revote on the 27th of August.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, congratulations on getting your pool completed. And thank you for bearing us with this process. Thank you. All right, next up, Village Hall, and we have a meeting with property owner adjacent to propose village hall site. Rohit?
Um, yeah, well, he's.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just make note, Mr. Mayor, that our planner had a conversation with one of the property owners that's adjacent to our village hall property, or our village property, and there is another property owner that he will be having a conversation with later this week, so we will probably have a better update at the work session. But the, the property owner was receptive to the ideas, and we will have continued discussion with the other property owner.
Yep.
Okay, is it fair that we'll leave it just at that until we get more information from the next?
Yep, that, that's it.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with that, but is there any way that we can possibly get those two property owners to either call in or be at the work session meeting? We have questions, or?
Yes, we're having a meeting with them.
We think I'm like stuck and dumb.
And we, we can ask them when we meet with them, this week.
Are you guys, is it okay with that?
Yeah, I, I.
That's fine, that's great.
I'm fine with it, they may be just not entertaining the fact that nothing is, if we're not going down the right path, that then why, you know, be projected to the public that if it's not going to work? See how it goes, I think on Thursday is the beginning, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
If it goes well, invite people to the meeting to talk to us, if not?
Absolutely, absolutely, I think that's, now, and all they can do is say no, so, but I think depending where it goes, it's up there. Thank you, probably. And thanks for putting that together, by the way.
You're welcome.
Next, I'm finished business, consideration memorial ideas for community leaders. Do we go there?
I've actually, I'm texting him right now, and he can, he can talk if you need to, have, if you have questions for him, but basically everything summarized in the memo is that the PRG board discussed the memorial plaques, and that's kind of what they recommended the plaques, which are around 100 to 200 bucks, but the most expensive part being the brick wall that would have to be constructed. So that's not.
Can we push this off to the work session? I really want to take pictures of the benches that I was supposed to take pictures of, but I didn't do it. My fault, sorry.
We can.
Yeah, I mean.
I like the idea of like a memorialized plaque, but I really like this bench, this bench, all with a bench, anyway, I'll take pictures of it for you guys.
Yeah, I, I just, my biggest issue when I looked at this is what wall are we talking about? Has that been factored into if we're doing against the village hall, or is this going to be at the park, or how does that work? I think we probably, a site in, in area of village hall where you kind of have wall of, you know, that's to have contributed, you know?
That's, that's what they discussed at the PRG board meeting, it looks like at the Newtown Hall location.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's obviously something that could change, and we could put it at the park if, if desired.
I'm, I'm fine with table link, but Kim, if that's your question, so.
I don't need to do, I'm good to.
Second floor request.
Okay, I'm good with that, so move, is everyone else all right with that, council?
I'm good.
And I'll get pictures of what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we work better with pictures.
I know.
And cranes.
Big print, too. Uh, next up is in steps of Tullamore Trail Phase Two update.
So just wanted to update you all again on the, the trail. It's actually, Fred's pulling the pictures up right now.
Yeah, um, let me know if you're able to see what I am sharing.
I'm, I'm seeing it.
Okay, great.
So this is on the initial construction phase, he still has another two to three weeks left, and obviously it's dependent on weather, but we just wanted to update you on the progress thus far.
Is that going to be with that pulverized gravel like the other ones?
It, it should be, yes.
Okay.
He works all that in, so he has to grade it first, but then he has to till it in and mix it with the existing soil.
And with that, that part, has this has been removed, or is that not that?
It has been removed, yes.
Okay. That's great.
That's all.
I don't have questions at that, but it looks like moving forward, which is great, so I'm sure they're happy over there at Tullamore.
That's all we had.
Thank you. Next up, consider award of contract for emergency road repair Marvin Creek, H&amp;S paving LLC, and an amount that to exceed $10,000, bar or goes, and allow administrator execute agreement.
So this was not even, okay. We've already discussed this, we just added it on here.
Yes, and have we worked with these, Alan, have we worked with these guys before?
We have, I believe, see, H&amp;S, I believe we have, I'd have to actually check our vendor files to tell you that for sure, but Mike has worked with them apparently in the past. Can you pull up our vendor files and see?
Okay, so approve through our engineers.
Correct, and I'm, I'm checking our vendor files right now.
It's tough screen.
No, I can't.
So you?
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Go to Gerald.
Aye.
I can hear the motion anyway, but, motion passes.
You said it earlier.
I didn't say it earlier.
Yeah, you did, I thought I moved you.
Discussion on financial contribution?
So we can ask by project.
To Joe Kerr Crosswalks.
Um, let's see. Sorry, so at the last work session, we had proposed the idea of splitting three crosswalks along Joe Kerr, or Joe Carr, at Wheatfield, Marvin Creek, Cantorfield, and Rattle Path, and the proposal was to split it five, five ways. I actually went to the HOAs and mentioned this to them, and they felt like it needed to be split more two-thirds, one-third, in which we would be paying approximately $63,000 for the project. Again, that's for three roundabout, or three crosswalks. So just need direction from you all as to what you're willing to contribute to the project. We had budgeted $15,000 for this project, and obviously came in much higher than what we anticipated. We just need further direction from the board.
Did all of the HOAs come back to you with that, the we should be paying two-thirds?
No, actually, one of them, one of them actually came back. There was another one that kind of passively mentioned that he thought it should be more, but not, so I've, I've heard from two of them.
You out of the four?
Correct.
Okay, my, my thing is, until we hear from all the HOAs, and they have a, an agreement amongst themselves in what they're willing to do, then we're just going to sit there and dread for numbers of them. They asked us to come back with a number, we've done that, they didn't like it, yet they didn't propose anything else. Two of them didn't even answer us. So until we hear, this is my opinion, but until we hear from all of them, and they have a collective agreement on what they're willing to do, or what they're, what they're asking us, I don't see the reason for us to further discuss this. If, if they're not even getting back to us, why, why are we spending staff's time on this?
If I may comment, and I agree with you, Kim, you know, that we need to hear back from these people, but we have to also understand that, you know, we all support the safety for this. Now, this is not our road, and yes, they're under the realm of Marvin, but they're separate developments. However, we're paying, we're using taxpayer dollars of all of Marvin to take care of three, three or four neighborhoods. I think our proposal was a fair one. I know we've come into, you know, you know, help in the past of where developers have just either left in communities, and we try to make it right, and we come to some sort of agreement, but we, we got to be careful what kind of precedent we set as we go forward, because in my, just, just looking at this whole thing, we're actually spending all of Marvin's taxpayer dollars for a safety issue that wants to be addressed by essentially four neighborhoods. And I, I don't know if that's fair, right, or we just need to think of a precedent, but going forward, until we hear from everyone, I think we did what we, they asked us to do, we came back with a number, to Kim's point, but until we've heard from everyone, you know, even if they say we don't, we don't comment, that's at least a response. But I think we need to hear back from everyone, and I'll leave it to council.
I, I'm with you, Jen, until we hear back from everybody, this should be a moot point.
And I totally agree with both of you, I feel the same way.
But I am on the record to address, want to put taxpayer dollars to address a safety issue, and it's, again, it's not our road, okay? We can't control the speed, we can't control the cross rocks, because we don't have that opportunity, DOT is allowing us to do that, so I'm just asking those neighborhoods that if you want safety, work with us on this, and, and I think that's fair.
And to their defense, just so y'all know, I did send an email to them and said if they have any different suggestions other than what was being suggested by the one HOA, then to let me know. So what I'll do is I'll reach back out to them and let them know that we want to hear back from, from all of them collectively, and make sure we're all on the same page, and I'll have some more information at the work session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so no action on that at this point. Discussion consideration traffic control options at Newtown and Martin Road.
Yes, so surprisingly, we did look into the traffic control options aside from off-duty law enforcement, and as you see, it's substantially much higher than what we are currently getting with the off-duty. I've provided the annual cost for each option and the reliability factors into the, the agenda packets. Again, it looks like the current off-duty law enforcement is the, the cheapest option, however, the reliability is, is very low to moderate based on our current rates. So at this time, I don't know if council wants to consider going up on those rates, if you want staff to continue to look at other resources, but inside of your agenda packets, you see that it costs anywhere from 130 to 286 per year for flaggers, construction flaggers.
Chris, do you know what are we paying an hour right now?
An hour, we're paying $30.
Oh, that's what we're paying now?
Correct.
But again, you got to remember that we're, we're paying this, but again, it's, it's the difficulty of him being able to get the resources to do the travel piece.
But he basically said if we sweetened the pot, he would, he would have a better chance of getting help. Yeah, get to have a better chance of attracting officers simply because of their travel. Get to have a better chance of attracting officers simply because of their travel that they have to make, you know, to get here and go back. And I, I can see their point. You know, if we, if we raised it some to cover the amount of time that they, 45 minutes here and 45 minutes back every day on top of the duty, I can, I can understand that. It's still cheaper than this.
What are we-
What's the magic number?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking anyone who's looked into it with, uh, I mean, if, if that's the officer who said, what's their magic number?
He, he, you know, at the meeting, I think someone asked that question and he was reluctant to give a number. Um, I don't know if they necessarily can throw out numbers, so I think it's just something that we offer and see what happens.
Friday nights are more expensive than Thursday nights.
Staff, staff can look into some, you know, what other rates are, what other municipalities are paying and, um, or are charging that have municipal services, uh, law enforcement services and we can come back at the work session with, you know, some recommendations.
I mean, my suggestion would be, you know, that he specifically said that these guys are traveling 45 minutes each way. So if we raise the hourly rate up enough to consent, to, to compensate them for that hour and a half worth of travel time, that might be a good starting point to see if we can attract some more people. So what is that?
Maybe we offer, maybe we offer in this, um, just add, if anyone who wants to take the 30-hour rate, we'll add an additional hour of travel time because they're not all going to be 45 minutes. Maybe it's the half hour travel time, so.
So if, Joe, if we just increase the hourly rate to 45, that automatically covers that at the rate they wouldn't normally be doing, just to simplify.
Forty-five total. If, if you're counting the hour and a half-
Three hours and then that hour and a half is that, that extra.
It's another 45 bucks per day.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Another $45 per day.
Yeah, if you're, if you're trying to compensate them for the hour and a half travel time, you said 45 one-way?
It's, it's 45 minutes each way is what they're traveling, so it's an extra hour and a half of their time. So if you divide that by the three hours that they're there, it's $15 an hour. So that's $30 plus 15, it's $45 an hour across the board for their time, which would essentially cover them at $30 an hour for their travel time as well. Does that make sense?
I'm not sure your math works, but I trust you, Andy.
It would be 45 a day. If you're trying to, if that's-
But it's the same because it's 15, it's $15 an hour times three, whether it's, because they're doing it three hours shifts.
They get 30 an hour.
Right, so if you pay $45 an hour, it's just another $45 a day because it's three hours. It's $15 an hour times three.
I got you. I see what you're saying.
So it's, the math works out the same.
I see what you're saying.
So it's just an extra $45 a day per, per officer is what we're, what, what I'm proposing to, to sweeten the pot a little bit to cover their travel time.
So let's start, let's offer them up $45 and see who takes it and see how reliable it is. And if it's not, then we may just have to suck it up and pay more and get somebody that's going to be there all the time. But I'm, I'm good with starting with 45 and, and see, see if we have the takers.
Y'all want to make a motion?
Actually, and, and my quick math, and then again, I didn't do, I only did 30 minutes, but you may be right on this, but I had 40, $40 a time, but you may be right because I didn't do an hour and a half. It was simpler math, but, but, but $30, $30 an hour times three hours is 90 bucks. You figure another hour and a half, um, that, that's, what, additional $45, is that correct?
Yeah, 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 that, that's-
So 90 plus, plus 45 equals 135 divided by three equals 45. So you're right. If we're doing an hour, if we're doing an hour and a half, I was only giving it a half hour travel time. But traffic's really bad, so I get it.
Yeah. It's, I think it's, uh, I think it's an economical solution to, to our problem and I, and I feel like we, we may get a little more interest on it. But like, like Kim said, if we don't, we can look at other options, but it's a good starting point.
So given, if you, hold on a second, just to be clear, because we're in a whole new world here with school and stuff, um, and it's only one day a week for all of us, our kids are, you know, based on, you know, I mean, are, are we, do we have that timeframe during the school session still and it's, all bets are off in the, or do we do it around, year-round, correct?
We did, yes, sir. Yes.
We're not, so we, we have that. Have you looked at that budget at $45?
I'm doing that right now. I'm doing it right now, but we've been vacant for so long that we probably can absorb it. You know, if need be, we'll do a, a budget amendment, but it should be minor based on the, the vacancy we've had.
How many days do we figure every workday, which comes out to what?
260 days. So it's 180 is the annual, or is the, is the daily rate now plus 45? So it's 225.
It comes out to like 78,000.
Fifty-eight, 58,500 is the total.
Forty-five for two people.
It's the total.
Days again, because I'm getting, I'm getting a different number. How many days?
260.
No, wait, you have to add 45 twice because it's pretty good in person, right?
No.
Oh, okay.
I have 70,000 dollars in here before I get my number.
I see what you're saying, you're right.
I have $45 an hour, right? Times three hours equals 135 times two individuals. That equals 270.
Yeah, you're, you're right, it is, it is. I was only counting one. You're right.
Okay, okay, so just so, I just want to be clear, we're at 70,000 now.
All right. And how much have we used this year on the budget?
I'd have to look at an annual report, but not much. I don't think we've actually had any.
So it's a-
Forty-six is what we budgeted.
It's an increase from 46 to 70?
Uh, yeah, if, if those numbers are correct, yes.
Now, something, Joe, because we're in different times, when, you know, not having a job in school in Union County, what is, what, what are they saying now that they're going to have, you said one day a week to go into school or, I mean, in fact-
Essentially, without getting into too much of the detail, it's, um, based on your last name, it's one day a week. Ours is Wednesday. Um, the rest of the time is remote and the teachers have a workday on Friday, so that-
But there's, we still need people Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday because everybody's going to school four days a week.
And the traffic is going to be increased because they're already driving the kids.
It's not just one day a week, it's all throughout, it's spread throughout the whole week, though.
Yeah, just different kids going different ways.
But it's not as many, there's not as many traveling and we're not, you know, the mornings are the issue and even in the evenings, um, the high schools don't really get into the high traffic. So why we decided on school days and, and why does that matter, I'm not really sure, but, um, is, is we give it every day of the week, two people at $45 an hour, just get our heads around 70,000 dollars until we get that round of action, please. So if it works in the budget, I'm okay with it because I think we need to support, I think it's really more supporting other towns, but, uh, we're a company, but.
So do you want a motion to up the price?
I do.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to raise the hourly rates for off-duty officers for traffic control from $30 an hour to $45 an hour.
So further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Oops, sorry, that's a unanimous vote. All right, thank you. Uh, next up, new business, consider adoption of resolution 202-01, call for special election for purpose of submitting vote on ordinance to amend the charter to change former government and allow mayor to vote on all matters.
So as y'all are aware, we had a petition recently that challenged the charter amendments that were made earlier this year and, um, those would basically coincide to demand a referendum and inside the resolution are the referendum questions, one being shall the ordinance changing the form of government to a mayor, cancel, sorry, cancel manager form of government be, be approved? And then shall the ordinance allowing the mayor of the Village of Marvin to vote on all matters be approved? Those would be the questions, they would be allowed in the absentee voting and, uh, we are requesting approval for the resolution if council wants to put this on the ballot for this year.
Any comments from council?
No.
No, I, I like it how it's working and it separates it and it makes it pretty clear. I'm just curious if you're going to get behind any effort as a council to support this. It'd be good, um, to know how, you know, how we do that and we're going to get complaints, but, um, I think it's something that, that makes a lot of sense as we talk to more and more people, so I'm okay as it is. So I'll need a motion to approve, um, the-
All right.
What?
Time out. You just said you want to know if council's going to get behind it. Didn't we discuss at the work session that we're going to send out blurbs and literature to educate the public of the, of why, why we wanted to change it to begin with?
Y'all did, I didn't.
Okay. All right, so we're, we're going, we're working on that, Joe.
Okay, I just, I just wanted, we just planned, we're just going to put it out there for, you know, but it'd be good, it'd be good to talk about in the September meeting too.
Agreed. Agreed.
Absolutely.
So I think, so I'll make a motion. I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution 2020-0801 to call for a special election for purpose of submitting vote on ordinance to change, I'm sorry, to amend the charter to change form of government and allow mayor to vote on all matters.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, your name is the, um, just, uh, I'm trying to navigate, I meant to say something, I didn't write it down, sorry, but, uh, um, okay, thank you. Uh, next up, we have discussion consideration of formation of Village Center Strategic Plan Committee. Over here.
Hey, great. Um, this is fun. So CP and I, uh, did a workshop, uh, and NC Growth submitted a report based on that workshop, as you know. Um, we did get the final version of the report and I can send that to you, um, soon, but the, uh, the most kind of immediate recommendation of theirs was, uh, to form a strategic plan committee whose responsibility would be to create a strategic plan for the Village Center. That would include just, not just the design of it, but also implementation, um, and, uh, like the zoning district, uh, funding opportunities and, uh, and basically everything that would be involved in this, uh, project. Um, and further, it would be an opportunity for other residents of Marvin, especially the property owners in the district, uh, to kind of be at the table in this discussion as opposed to kind of being on the outside while only the planning board, um, makes these decisions. Um, so today I'm bringing to the council a request to form a, uh, committee, uh, for the purpose of creating a strategic plan, uh, that would meet once a month, um, first Thursday evening, um, and we picked that date because it's, uh, two weeks, uh, from the planning board meeting. I expect there to be, uh, back and forth every month, uh, from what the, the committee did and then the planning board looks at it and then talks about it and then that goes back to the committee. So two weeks would be, uh, you know, you know, the time that we did the legwork in between. And have seven members. Uh, I think I said six to eight in the, uh, in the memo, but I think, uh, seven would be the magic number there. And also to be facilitated by an outside consultant. And this, this doesn't necessarily have to be decided today, but, uh, there is a county planner who, uh, wants to get involved in this project and that, her being a county planner kind of has a lot of synergy, um, you know, because we have a lot of services that depend on the county, so it would be great if she would be involved and she has experience with the downtown, uh, project, um, like downtown development, uh, that I honestly, I don't have experience in a project like, leading a project like this. So all those things, uh, considered, um, I'd like to, to get what your opinion is and see if you'd like to form such a committee.
So I'm great, I, I think it's a great idea to form this committee. I would like to invite this lady, Emma, what's her name?
Emma Lee.
Just come and give us like a quick, like five, 10 minute thing at a work session just so we can get a feel for her and what she knows.
Sure.
And that way we can make a decision on her. But I absolutely think you should form a committee. How are you planning on, um, appointing members or are you going to ask what, what type of your thought process there?
So it would be the same, uh, process as the website committee where we advertise the openings for seven positions on the committee. We invite anyone who, uh, is a resident of Marvin to apply and then those applications would be seen by the council, um, you know, as received. Maybe we have all, um, we have seven or more applications by the next work session. I do, um, expect that some planning board members will apply for this committee, um, just because of the nature of it and, uh, you know, that will also have some synergy. And I think it would be not hard to have seven people apply if we, um, post it soon and then, um, and then have it, uh, you know, applications out and then, uh, see what, how many applications we get by the, uh, the work session and then you can, uh, look at them and, uh, decide who gets to join.
I'm good with that, that sounds great.
Any other comments?
If I may add, uh, yes, this is what is needed and it's a natural evolution. As you remember over here, when you went to the Main Street Conference, uh, there are generally five committees that falls. The first one is the organization committee, which is what this would be. The organization committee, once it's established, stays in place. Uh, then the other committees naturally form, which are the design committee, which would be the promotion committee, uh, the business committee, um, and they all kind of naturally evolve together. The organization committee is the one that kind of would turn into a board. Uh, this is one that would, oh, no, kind of like looking oversee the whole, what would be eventually the Main Street program or heritage program, we, we call it, as you know. So, um, yeah, this is a natural involvement. So my comments are, yeah, this is great. The only question I have, the only one I had is that, um, in my, my experience, the property owners were involved in this, okay? Because the property owners all didn't agree, um, it naturally. In this case, you have a buy-in from all the property owners that want to participate for the most part. Um, would we include them too? Could they be included or would we refuse them? What's your, what's your thought of what you had heard?
That, yeah, that did come up. In fact, uh, someone saw it on the agenda and said if I, uh, one of the property owners said, so if I wanted to apply, would I then have to refuse myself on any decision involving my property? And I think that kind of defeats the purpose of the committee, um, because the strategic plan should, I mean, obviously there are some areas that we want certain types of development and some areas we want, like maybe in the center we have more and in the fringes we have less. But it kind of defeats the purpose if they have to recuse themselves. Rather, um, you know, we should make sure that the decisions made in this committee are, you know, kind of applicable across the board and that they make sense, um, based on the, uh, the, the location and not the property owner. If that makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, but they, they, everybody had a, the, the other business people, again, my fast experience with this, the, the business owners, even though they agreed on they needed to do something with enhancing and, and developing the downtown, not everybody agreed on what would go in, you know? A restaurant on one end and somebody would say, well, I don't know if that complements this. That's what had kind of helped the dialogue around.
Right.
The property owners weren't in on it, you know, that sort of thing that, and, you know, it all, it all comes down to they were all governing themselves, like one property would say, well, I want to turn my shoe store into a restaurant. Well, okay, he's got motivation, he's sitting on the committee, but there were other enough people that said, well, that's a wonderful thing, or I don't know, maybe that's too close to another restaurant, you know what I'm saying? It's, so I agree with you.
But at the end of the day, like this is just, it's a committee. We're the ones that are making the decisions, like, so if they have to, I mean, they're not voting, I mean, they're going to, they're not voting to like, I mean, do anything. Maybe vote to tell us something, but they're not the ones that are implementing this. So I, I don't think that, I don't think that that plan, what the owners on there is, I think that's going to be a, a plus.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not worried about that.
Ideas are free, is all I gotta say.
Right.
And anyone who's willing to volunteer or be a part of it, I mean, it's just, I guess the process of picking it would be the only issue, picking who.
So, Rohit put it out there as a community, let's see if we can get some applications by the, uh, work session, and then we'll go through them. And, um, uh, see if this lady from Union County can come and, you know, five, five, maybe 10 minute presentation.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks Rohit.
Wait, does there need to be a motion to establish this committee?
Yeah, let's do a motion and to instruct you to advertise, just since you're taking an affirmative step.
Sure.
So, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, form a Village Center Strategic Plan Committee and put the request out to the community.
Further discussion? Favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously, next up, discussion of Village Center timeline and next steps.
Alright, so, again, uh, the evolution of this process is, uh, you know, CP and I also gave us a, you know, like, these are the 10 next steps, and I kind of synthesized it, you know, just for, it, it's a lot to digest, so I've synthesized it into four main steps. Um, with the first one, obviously, being to adopt the land use plan and future land use map, that's kind of almost at the end of that step, so I don't have to talk about it too much. Um, the next step would be to create this strategic plan, um, and so that, that kind of gives us an idea of where we're going. Again, the strategic plan also includes implementation. So, you know, we create the plan and then we start following the plan. Um, then we create a zoning district. So, the zoning district will be the more of the regulations, um, you know, what we allow these property owners to do. And I've already got, you know, what, what foundation zoning district, uh, should we use discussion, kind of on the next, uh, planning board agenda, so that can, uh, get started. And finally, um, the adoption, establishment of a municipal service district. Um, and so that is, that's the most crucial step, I think, and, uh, it would allow us to, uh, again, tax the owners of the district only a commercial rate, and then use that tax, take a loan on the future taxes, and then spend that money now to build the infrastructure that they would need to develop this way. Um, and obviously, not all the infrastructure, just kind of like the common ones, and then they're responsible for the ones on their property. Um, so that way, the developers don't have to put as much money upfront, but we're still spending their money, just their future money. Um, and the municipal service district is effective the next, starting the next fiscal year from when it is adopted. So, um, you know, it's August now, so hopefully, all these things happen as, um, you know, as they, uh, are kind of projected. And, uh, we can establish the district, uh, the municipal service district, uh, by the end of this fiscal year to be effective starting next fiscal year.
Have you talked, thought about, have you put numbers to the paper and numbers together?
I, I have, I have. Um, and, and they're still a little preliminary, um, and I, and that's why I, I needed, uh, a budget to hire someone with, uh, who can take that more finely, but, um, I projected that we would collect around $2 million in 20 years. Um, and that, that can be plus or minus depending on the success of the district. Um, but basically, that money could be used to fund, um, all of the infrastructure, uh, water, sewer, streetscapes, um, and even, as I said, uh, in the retreat, it can also fund Village Hall, um, shortage, uh, budget shortage if, uh, if that's something that you desire. Um, so, you know, when you were talking about financing before, it can also, can also lump all of this together and, um, and talk about that as one of the things that municipal service districts can pay for.
Well, towns do bonds, that kind of thing, are you looking at something like that? Or are you looking more of a tax on, on actual businesses?
Um... It's an overlay tax.
Yeah, so this, this is a, you, you can use all sorts of funding mechanisms. Um, this overlay tax would have to be created, um, and then you can either take a bond or you can, uh, put a general bond or a loan, or take a loan on the money, uh, that you'll collect in the future. Um, and, and the, which is better, or maybe a combination of that, um, and maybe a tax increment financing district? I'm not entirely sure, um, but I know that those options exist and there are very common options for municipalities to encourage, um, development like this. Um, and, and again, that's why I, uh, I want to, uh, include, uh, a consultant to get more of the finer details on that.
So, I think what he's, he's saying is, we don't actually know the numbers are finite right now, so we're trying to, to find someone to, to look at these numbers and make sure they're good, but what he's generally asking is, is the timeline look good for you guys? Um, are you guys okay with moving forward with, um, trying to get things done before next year so we can establish it in, into next year's budget? Um, and obviously, we would know those numbers more detailed by the time that comes around.
Right, right, so, I, I, while I did create like an estimated, um, amount based on what we think we might collect, um, if they develop, uh, the, the point of this, today's conversation is not to tell you, oh, I think wheels collect, you know, to 2.5 million with the MSD, it's mostly to say that an MSD is Municipal Service District is a vital part of where we get the money to build, uh, these infrastructures that we're proposing. So, uh, that is kind of the goal, uh, right now, is to establish that by the end of this fiscal year, so it can take effect, uh, the next fiscal year.
Short term, Rohit, you, I mean, just in terms of what you're looking for in the next couple of months? Just speak to that.
Yeah, sure.
It, it, it looks like in the next couple of months, we need to finalize the land use plan. So, are we, you know, how about the rest of our homeworks? Get it?
Um, we're, we're gonna put the, the final draft of the land use plan on the next week's planning board agenda, and maybe they'll be ready to submit it next week, or maybe they'll submit it to you in September. But, um, they will submit a final version of the whole land use plan to you in a month or so.
And then, do we need to keep these dates that are in here open, uh, waiting on the planning board to make a decision when they wanna do the, uh...
Um, uh, yes, I think, um, let's see, did we talk about that earlier? Um, no, um, that was the, that was what we discussed at the previous meeting, the 3rd, the 10th, or the 17th, um, they were kind of thrown out there all in the evening, and, uh, I just haven't asked planning board yet because we haven't actually had a planning board meeting since the last meeting of council. So, I'll be asking them which of those dates work at next week's meeting, and then I'll let you know what they said at the 27th work session.
Perfect.
So, the only thing that I have to chime in about is, is I'm trying to understand this and which, which is the best way to finance this and stuff. So, I can see, and, and again, there's so many unknowns, it's like, how do you get to a $2 million number? What, what does that mean? How many, is then that then drive, how many businesses and types of businesses you need to have in this just to get to that number? And why are we getting that number? However, so I, I think if we had something like a construction of town hall, it's over budget and we need to raise, uh, a million dollars to deal with the, the things that we weren't expecting, whether that's a loan, whether that's funded through a bond, either way is good. What I see is, um, for a reason for a sales tax, where that would come into play, in fact, if I'm wrong, because I'm just speaking out loud, is if we take on, um, uh, the roundabout, from roundabout to roundabout, and now we have that state road is now part of Marvin, and we have to, now how do you fund that going forward? Where you don't fund it through a loan or a bond, you have to fund that through some sort of tax. So, that would be where I would focus the efforts on for me, of if I'm going to do a sales tax. That sales tax, I'm not sure goes towards infrastructure. I think infrastructure, whether it's water, sewer, and putting a town hall in, because everybody, every landowner's gonna do their own deal with whatever we allow them to do, and that's on them, as long as it falls into it. But when it comes to the roads that connect the three roundabouts, that's where I see a sales tax, um, imposing a sales tax to get this, we're not gonna do this on how bill budget.
So, we're, we're, we're talking about a few different things here, and the numbers are really a, a conversation that we need to have at a later date. We're really only talking about the timeline here, and if y'all are okay with us moving forward with this timeline.
And, and that's what I thought, we were, I mean, to me, that mean, everything below that, that box and around the box means that's a discussion for another time. I am, I, I am 100% for, and great job for putting, putting together a timeline. We can work to the timeline. But if you don't have a timeline and you don't have markers in the stand to, to, to move up to and to hold you accountable or hold us accountable, then it's just, it just lingers on, it keeps going. So, kudos for putting this together. I think we'll address all of the issues that, that the mayor put up, that the mayor's throwing out there. All of those will come inside the parameters of the timelines of those boxes. But kudos, really, for putting this together and, and, um, and putting a structure around it to hold us accountable.
So, for, at the next work session, we will try to go ahead and get some dates set up for the first two boxes. We'll have the committee members hopefully in place, and then we'll go ahead and start planning some meeting dates.
Right.
And then, um, kind of lay out what specifically is needed for the strategic plan. And then we'll focus on the other two items at a, at a later work session.
Right.
Which would include the, the financial model piece of it, once we hire a consultant. But in concept, if you guys are okay with that, then we're gonna move forward with it.
I, I love, personally, I love it. I, I think 100%. As a business, we, we have a plan, we work, you plan, they work, and you work, you plan, and I think it's a great job.
Thank you.
I'm good.
We need a motion for anything on this?
Um, I don't think so, yeah, there's, there's...
And I'm good for it, so. Okay, thank you Rohit.
Thank you.
Next up, what?
Uh, I just said thank you.
Okay, um, next, we have a discussion of annexation of Newtown Road between Blackstone Marvin Road and Marvin School Road.
Okay, so this really should be a very quick discussion, even though it sounds complicated. Basically, um, council's desire is to, uh, take Newtown Road over from NC DOT, but they have raised the concern that between the two roundabouts that exist, so very short distance, our municipal limit does not, um, contain the entire road. It only contains one of the lanes, and that I kind of tried to depict in the packet. Hopefully, you have a color version, I'm seeing Chaplain has a black and white version. Hopefully, you can actually see which is Marvin and which is not. And if you can, you'll see that, um, yeah, thank you Christina. So, you'll basically see that we have an area of that road that we want to take from NC DOT that's not technically in our municipal limits, and I'm seeking direction from council to, um, consult with Chaplain, DOT, and the county GIS to, uh, work on annexing the area that I've highlighted, um, so that we can have the whole road. And I don't really identify any, you know, any negative impact of doing this. It's free, there's no properties that we have to annex, um, we just have to do it. The only impact I've identified is that currently Derrick only takes away the non-compliant signs that are on our side of the street, but if we do this, and say we don't take the road from NC DOT, the only downside is that he has to now take out the signs from both sides of the road.
This is a requirement to, to take over ownership of the road that y'all are interested in?
Yeah, in short, in, in short, that.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's fine, I'm not worried about the, uh, the only thing that I'm concerned about, which I know we don't have the answer to yet, but we really need to get this answer before the work session, is if we take over this road, is the university still gonna pay for the roundabout?
Right.
That's all I'm worried about.
And, and that's not a conversation that needs to be combined with this.
I mean, take over half the road, annexing it in, whatever, that's not a big deal, we can do that. It's, I mean, whatever.
Well, and that's...
We need to make sure that they're still gonna pay for the Newtown Marvin Road.
That's a question that, that I put into them, and I've actually reminded them as well, but that can be a separate conversation. If you're interested in moving forward with the annexation, Rohit can start on the process and hopefully we'll have an answer, but if you wanna wait to get the answer on that, we can bring this back at the work session.
So, so my question would be is why the rush? And the reason I ask that is, if it's tied to, if we take the road over and we get our roundabout done sooner, then I'm all in. But other than that, you know, we, we're still planning and, and, and adjusting to bringing in on roads and stuff, but why the rush? And then, you know, I mean, DOT doesn't necessarily stick with their word. I mean, they can say something and then they say, well, let's do the road now. I mean, you can get a whole new, uh, people in there. I, I, I'm very worried about them holding to their word about...
That's, I mean, that's why I want, I wanna hear what they can say, and I want Chaplain to be a part of that, because if they, I mean, if we're in a contract with them, like, if we're in a contract, it needs to be a legally binding contract. And otherwise, I'm with you, Joe, I don't think we need to rush into it, but I think that if, if they can give us an answer and we can make sure that it's gonna be legally binding, then we can continue to move forward with it. We find out that we've gotta take over from one half of the road, that's fine, that's not a big deal. If we have, if, if they won't use the roundabout if we own it, then we wait, if we do it.
The bottom line is, there's nothing more that DOT would love to do is to relinquish their responsibility for roads. We're giving them an opportunity to relinquish a small portion in exchange for moving up our roundabout, period. And if that doesn't happen, if that's not part of the equation, I'm not interested in taking that over until that's done, Joe.
Okay, so we, we were under the impression that y'all wanted to take the roads over regardless of getting it pushed up or not, meaning that we would set, make a separate agreement that they would still do that when they were supposed to, obviously, do the construction. We can have an agreement that's going on where we're still having the, the ownership of the road, but they're going to do the outfit. It would be a different legal agreement that we'd have to get at the same time.
Yeah, we need to make sure that they can, they may have to own the road, maybe have to, may have to be DOT road for them to put state DOT dollars in it. I know that while bills and...
And that's, that's what I'm worried about, that's why I wanna, we need to find an appropriate...
I don't know, regardless, but it's about the timing and about the, you know, the responsibility, you can build it.
I think where this came up, I think where this came up was we were trying to control the speed limit. I think that's what this was born out of, that we were trying to bring the speed limit down to 25. But, everybody makes, is making good points about it, but I'm just saying, I think that's where it came from.
So, why don't we just...
There is no rhyme or reason to what, and I asked DOT this in one of the meetings where I see our TPO meeting, and I said, what's, you know, they, they have some money to finish some things, and it's like, but what is your process on determining what is first? What I'm saying is, let's give them a reason to put us at the top of the list, you know? So, why not negotiate this? Because I don't wanna touch this if they don't, if, if, and look until it's done.
Okay, we'll add it on the work session, we'll, we'll try to get an answer by the work session and we'll add that and the...
Perfect.
Okay, so no action on this for now? That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, last is open topics, I don't think we have anything, so, agenda items, uh, or do we have anything? I don't think we added anything for that. Um, review of action items and ongoing action items.
So, I'll go ahead and start with the action items that were assigned in this meeting. Uh, several things were assigned to the work session, including traffic calming devices, town hall ideas and agenda, property owners potentially being, um, in the...
The work session, yeah.
Work session for the Village Hall. Street issues regarding, uh, fire throwing manholes, charter change, educational pieces, memorial ideas, minutes for 51220, Joe Kerr crosswalks update, work session, uh, Village Center District Subcommittee, potentially having Emma Lane come in and do a quick introduction, hopefully having, uh, the public input meeting dates scheduled and the next steps, have the annexation for this, uh, street that we're just discussing, and an update from DOT in terms of, uh, Newtown acceptance, and notifying Gene Stowe, planning board, and PRG of the upcoming town hall meeting, and notifying the law enforcement agency of an increase in salaries, and I think that that is it.
Okay, thank you. And do we have anything from, on the continuing list here?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, Councilwoman. Um, Robert.
Uh, just again, once again, to compliment, thank the staff, but everybody's working pretty hard, and, uh, I wanna just appreciate everyone being on top of things and being safe, so, I appreciate it.
Jay, come in.
Thank you to all of the first responders out there and to, really to law enforcement that had just gotten flooded over the past couple of months, um, by some faction of our society that think that law enforcement are bad people and they're there to protect us every day. Are there a few bad apples? Absolutely, there are bad apples in every corner of employment in this world. Um, but thank you to law enforcement. I've got a dear friend of mine and several people in law enforcement that, that go out there... out there and I can promise you and tell you that every day that they go out there, that their, their loved ones truly are concerned and, and hopeful that they come home that night, so thank you law enforcement. Thank you to all of our military for their service and sacrifice, um, they, they are just the unsung heroes of, of, of our country. Next is, I am still just completely appalled that our state government still won't allow some business to open and earn a living while they sit there and earn that every dollar that they, it's not impacted them one bit from a financial standpoint. As, uh, as citizens, I, I think they take, they take it for granted that as citizens that we are smart enough to know whether if I should walk into a gym, if it's safe or not. But, uh, I know my gym's been closed from the very beginning and this, this young lady borrowed money and took all of her savings to open up a, a, a fitness center and here she is every single day, she can't go earn a living. And I'm, I'm appalled at our state government, every person that draws a check, you should be ashamed of yourself. Um, thanks, thanks to our planning and our PRG boards for all the time and work. You, you, you gotta sit back there, you do a lot and you never, sometimes you just don't, you just don't get the thanks for it and I appreciate, appreciate that. Um, and staff, thanks for all that you do and keeping us accountable and keeping us going and, and, um, many times making us look good, so thanks for that. That's what I got.
Thank you Jamie. And?
Uh, I don't have any comments, I think we've all been covered.
Thank you. Kim?
Um, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge, uh, the email that Christine sent out about the village hall and the queue, I think it looks great, so as soon as we can go out, let's do that to the bottom. Thanks for, if we don't have a closed session.
And to Kim, um, we're sort of like, thanks staff and then all the efforts and their work that they can do and I appreciate you guys, uh, I know your staggering times of being in it, but you guys are getting a lot of work done and I, I saw so much more progress, um, going on and stuff, which is good, cause I think we're, we're hitting on all the pistons or, like also the state, state and capital, or coming up to attend remotely. I know sometimes you find yourself, obvious situation, you can't meet, but, and I tend to keep doing this, but, uh, um, I do appreciate the fact that we're able to do this and, and get, uh, work and business done. Um, the one question, as I remembered, on, on the voting thing that we've, earlier, um, and what's the timeframe on that? Does, does it need my signature right away on that?
To vote, it means that's a referendum?
Oh, it does, it does need your, it does need, need your signature, but we can do it electronically.
Okay, so that, you know, if it's within a couple of days, uh, or next week, I can do, we can do that or you do it remotely. Um, just, I'm just concerned because sometimes there's a timeline or stamp for what the, what you need to get on the ballot.
We've been in communication with them, so they're aware, but we would like to send them an official copy as soon as possible, so if we could use your electronic signature, that would be great.
Okay, hey, that's great, I'll do that, I'll, I'll get you out, uh, Austin, the, uh, confirming you can do that.
Thank you.
Uh, just a comment, Rohit and I attended earlier this week a Union County kind of futurist, future planning meeting out to 2050, um, and, uh, my big takeaway from it is the, um, and this is, this is gonna get us hard and we're all gonna find out real soon how bad this is, but, um, is the lack of infrastructure for broadband. Um, that is one of their, the biggest concerns from all the municipalities and what we're getting back, obviously, schools and stuff, things are gonna change, but I, I will tell you, once school starts and, uh, neighborhoods may be affected because, uh, I know ours has trouble as it is now with all these kids and people being on the internet, it's gonna be an issue. And one person did bring this up and I was surprised to hear him, he was actually, uh, the, the mayor of, uh, Waxaw, who was a, a developer and he came from California and he's like, I, you know, the way you address this and this somehow we need to get behind is, uh, municipalities urging the state legislature is, is what's called impact fees. We're one of the few states that don't have impact fees. We allow developer to build what they want by right by the municipality, they add to the schools, that's the biggest cost to us and, and that cost is then dumped on the existing taxpayer, taxpayers. If you have an impact fee, it's a pass-through for the developer, it ends up going to the person buying the property. I think we need to, uh, start that up again, but that was a big concern about, um, because Union County can't just offer, uh, internet service when they don't have it, so, um... The, also had a chance to sit with the other municipalities, uh, Weddington was there and representing also Wesley Chapel. They're very excited about this new alliance that we're doing and I think there are numbers in, uh, there are power in numbers, so Andy and I, I look forward to, I'll, I'll start getting you, hopefully you're getting emails, if you're not, I'll make sure I'm on that list. But it looks like everybody is approving it as of this week, I'm starting to get emails and I'm excited to kind of, you know, as we talk, sometimes we have lunch together there and that's where really the business is done, is get-togethers like that, so I'm looking forward to that, so. And with that, that's all I have. I'll need a motion to go into closed session.
So move. I've got a second purpose. I'm sorry.
First, for Bonzak and Jamie, you wanna read that?
Yes, I make a motion that we move into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318, uh, point 11A6 to discuss personnel.
Further discussions?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes out.
Ready?
Go.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to move out of closed session into open session.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, uh, and, motion adjourned?
I move.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.